Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Lakeport City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 6. Thank you for being here with us. Do we have any, I guess we need to have a roll call.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Barlett?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Pro Tem Disney?
Here.
And Mayor Costa?
Here.
Okay, so next up is the Pledge of Allegiance, and what we've started doing, I unofficially call it Faces of Lakeport, and tonight, my friends, the Sloan family, are gonna lead us. So if you want to come up, I'm gonna tell people just a little bit about you. Come on up to the microphone, thank you. So, Uni, Sheldon, and Pedro Sloan are my dear friends and were longtime Lakeport residents until last year, when they bought some beautiful property in Upper Lake, but they are still very, um, they contribute to Lakeport in some meaningful ways, and I wanted to call that out. Uni has an Airbnb that she runs from her property, and when people come from all over the country and beyond, she tells them about our wonderful park and our restaurants and our businesses that they can visit. Sheldon has been a physician's assistant with tribal health for 18 years, and he serves many Lakeport residents in that capacity. He's also retired from the Navy, where he served our country. Pedro graduated from Clear Lake High and was on the football team. I think you guys were, were you undefeated that year? You guys were champions of something, you were champions, for sure. And, um, and so Uni got her citizenship, there, Uni and Pedro are from Brazil originally. She got her citizenship while living in Lakeport in 2024, and Pedro is gonna get his citizenship next week, I believe, and that's awesome. And after getting your citizenship, it's my understanding, you're going to also enlist in the Navy, where you're going to serve our country and protect us. Thank you so much. And so, Uni and Pedro, their first language is Portuguese, because they're from Brazil, but they're very capable in English, but we have a special treat tonight. Uni's going to first say the Pledge of Allegiance in Portuguese for us, and if you happen to speak Portuguese, you can say it along with her. Otherwise, just enjoy, you know, hearing a beautiful language from somebody patriotic who loves our country, loves our town, I'm gonna say the pledge, and then Pedro's gonna pick it up in English when we'll all just kick in with Pedro. Okay, so we can stand and look at the flag and enjoy.
Eu juro lealdade a bandeira dos Estados Unidos da América e a república que ela representa. Uma única nação sob Deus, indivisível, com liberdade e justiça para todos.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Abra gara! Thank you, so next up, we have the acceptance of the agenda. Any urgency items or changes?
We do have one modification to the agenda. We need to remove item 6A Part 2, which is the approval of the Cross Connection Control Plan from the agenda. That item will be brought back for consideration at a future meeting, but item 6A 1 will remain on the agenda for consideration, the public carrying ordinance.
Thank you. So with that modification, gonna get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as modified.
Second.
The motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we're gonna move into the consent agenda. I first want to mention again that we really appreciate everyone who's joined us in the room, everyone who's online. There are opportunities for you to share your views throughout this meeting. When an item comes up on the agenda, if you're here to speak on that, then you'd come to the podium, please, and speak into the microphones that we can all hear you. And if you're online, you can raise your hands, you raise your hand option, and we'll unmute you so that you can speak. There's also a portion of the meeting for public input that, for items not on the agenda, and you're welcome to come and do the same during that time. So at this time, we're moving to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. However, any council member may request that any item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under the regular agenda. Removed items will be considered following the consent calendar portion of this agenda. Tonight's consent agenda items include: A. Ordinance wave reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage per Government Code Section 36934; B. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of April 15, 2025; C. Approve application 2025-024 with staff recommendations for the 2025 Concerts in the Park; D. Approve application 2025-025 with staff recommendations for the Lake County Pride Health Fair; E. Approve application 2025-026 with staff recommendations for the street closure for the Vet Connect Award presentation to the county. Does any council member wish to pull any of those items? Would any member from the public like to comment on any of those items? Any online?
No hands raised online.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have public presentations. The first, uh, the first item here is public input for any item not on the agenda. Any person may speak for a few minutes about any subject within the authority of the city council, provided that the subject is not already on tonight's agenda. For Government Code 54954.3A, the city council cannot take action or express a consensus of approval or disapproval on any public comments regarding matters which do not appear on the printed agenda. So those are rules. We still want to hear from you. Do you have anything that you'd like to share with us tonight that is not on the agenda? Looks like no one in the room, anyone online, Mel?
No hands raised online.
Right, thank you very much. So we'll close public comment portion. To share, thank you. All right, we have some proclamations now, three proclamations. And council, three different council members are going to take turns sharing those proclamations. The first proclamation is a presentation of a proclamation designating May 1 through 7, 2025, as Elks Youth Week in the city of Lakeport. Do we have some people here to present? The team effort.
Hi, how's it going?
We do, did you have any presentation, anything you'd like to say to us before the presentation, the proclamation?
No, I haven't, no.
No, yes, or maybe introduce yourselves?
I wasn't prepared tonight.
That's fine, you can speak from your heart.
I want to let you know, we do a variety of things like scholarships and grants, so we're giving over $10,000 in scholarships this year.
Wow.
All right, and then we have Americanism, which has been doing, it's, one of our members, Suzie Chappelle, has been doing it for over 18 years with the Upper Lake School District, middle to eighth graders, and they find something in the Constitution, this is from the Grand National Elks, and they send it out to all the United States, and they give them assignment of one part of the Bill of Rights or the Nat, or the Constitution, and they have to write an essay on it. It's now part of the Upper Lake School District curriculum. So these kids with English have to write an essay, anyway, and lots of kids, over 150, we have to go through. It's very interesting, some have like three words and some are really, I know, I've.
Okay, very passionate about it.
We work with Sal's and Mike Powers as part of the Sheriff's Athletic League. Do you want to talk about it, so I don't talk anymore?
I'm gonna take up for you, I guess. So anyway, like I said, they, they got a grant this last year for Sal, for $4,000, and it goes to the different programs Sheriff's Athletic League puts on. It has to do with fishing, kayaking, we're starting a new one, it's some horse, beginning horse training and that type of thing. We do some other things too, that, you know, like I said, it's.
Junior Giants.
Junior Giants is a big thing, and like I said, that it'll go, it'll definitely help this year with the, uh, the change in junior giants, with the cutting the funding for the ambassador program that has to do with the Giants program, so that'll help with that.
What schools are involved, or what kids are involved?
Well, it's kids from all over the county. They come, they come from Clear Lake, they come from Lakeport, they come from Councilville, they come from all the different areas, East Lucerne, Upper Lake up in there, and it's all held over at the elementary school in Councilville. And so, like I say, it benefits the whole county, so we're very appreciative of the proclamation and the people who are going to do that. New for the Elks, nuclear.
Wonderful, we're appreciative of you and all you do. Councilmember Price, would you like to?
All right, and thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to per, present your guys' proclamation. So this proclamation designating May 1 through 7, 2025, as Elk, Elks Youth Week in the city of Lakeport. Whereas, Lakeport Elk's Lodge Number 2704 will sponsor an observance of the National Bellevent and Protective Order of Elks, Elk's Youth Week, May 1 through 7, 2025, to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to community, state, and nation. And whereas, no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who, in the years ahead, will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. And whereas, our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement, which we can only give in cooperation, which we can only give in cooperation with other local agencies and partners in order to develop those qualities of character essential for the future leadership roles in our nation and communities. And whereas, over, for over 19 years, Lakeport Elk's Lodge has promoted the annual Elk National Americanism Essay Contest, which is open to all students in the 5th through 8th grades. In 2023, 150 essays were submitted, with a Lake County student placing third in the state level finals. And whereas, this year, Lakeport Elks had a fun turnout as they participated in the Elks National Hoop Shoot, which has been unleashing gritty kids for over 50 years for youth ages 8 through 13. Hoop Shoot is committed to making contests fully inclusive and safe for all of our participants and volunteers. And whereas, Lakeport Elk's Lodge Number 2704 is giving $4,000 in scholarship to five outstanding seniors from Lake County's three public high schools this year. And whereas, the Elk's Drug Awareness Program, or DAP, has been recognized as the largest all-volunteer drug awareness program in the United States. Elks believe that to ensure a bright future for our country, it is essential that our children be raised in a drug-free environment. And whereas, Lakeport Elk's Lodge 2704 participates in the Lake County Sheriff's Activities League, SAL, which builds relationships between law enforcement and local youth through sporting activities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Lakeport does hereby designate the week of May 1 through 7, 2025, as Elk's Youth Week, as Elk's Youth Week in the city of Lakeport, and encourages everyone to join in the celebration. Yay, I have here on you, that's my hand, yes. So, um, so yes, the sixth day of May, thank you. And I have your guys' proclamation, you can take a photo with the mayor.
Let's do it.
And they updated that for.
Ooh, better.
Got a scholarship from them.
Whoever wants to hold it, like the whole kind of sandwich you guys in with the red?
That's fine.
Okay.
Whatever.
Next item is, oh, do we ask for public input? Did I miss my opportunity? Okay, thank you. Next item is a presentation of a proclamation designating May 11 through 17, 2025, as National Police Week in the city of Lakeport. And Chief, did you want to speak to this at all?
I will speak to it, although it speaks a lot to itself, but in 1962, John F. Kennedy signed into public law proclaiming May 15 to be Peace Officer Memorial Day, and proclaiming that week as being National Police Week. And for many years, I can't even tell you how many Lake County law enforcement and first responders have gathered on one day that week at the First Responder Memorial that's been erected in Museum Square to honor the fallen federal, state, and municipal law enforcement officers and first responders that have, have died. This year, we will sadly be honoring the 147 peace officers who died in the line of duty nationwide, marking a 25% increase over the previous year. And that will be on Friday, May 16, starting at 5:30 in the evening.
In Museum Square?
Yes, Museum Square.
Such a somber event, it doesn't.
It is.
Okay, so. Proclamation of the city council of the city of Lakeport to recognize National Police Week 2025 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Lakeport Police Department. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, 345 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 148 officers killed in 2024 and 197 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 36th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2025. And whereas, the Candlelight Vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 11 through 17. And whereas, May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Lakeport does hereby designate May 11 through 17, 2025, as National Police Week in the city of Lakeport, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. All right, our third proclamation is a presentation, let me just pause. Was there anybody from the public who wanted to comment on our last item? I feel like I'm rushing by and not giving people the chance, and I don't want to do that. Nobody in the room, anyone online?
No hands raised online.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is a presentation of proclamation designating May 4 through 10, 2025, as National Small Business Week in the city of Lakeport. Do we have anybody here to present on that, or to speak? Up to you.
I will still present it. As a small business owner myself, when Mayor Costa was asking about reading these proclamations, I jumped at the chance to read this one, so thank you for the opportunity. So, here's a proclamation designating May 4 through 10, 2025, as National Small Business Week in the city of Lakeport. Whereas, America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. And whereas, the storefront shops that anchor our downtown areas to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas, small business owners and downtown businesses have energy and a passion for what they do. When we support small businesses, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas, because this country's nearly 35 million, small businesses create roughly half of all jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve to create jobs and spur economic growth without discussing ways to support entrepreneurs. And whereas, Small Business Week serves as an opportunity to acknowledge the contributions of these entrepreneurs and encourage residents to support local businesses by shopping locally, utilizing small business services, and investing in community growth. And whereas, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the US Small Business Administration and other agencies. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Lakeport does hereby designate the week of May 4 through the 10, 2025, as National Small Business Week in the city of Lakeport, and encourages everyone to shop local small businesses.
Very nice, thank you. Does.
Thank you for the call.
And is there any money in the public that would like to comment on this item?
Hi, guys.
Anybody online, Mel?
No hands raised online.
Thank you. Our next item is a presentation by the Lake County Land Trust.
Good evening, can you hear okay? Sound okay? Okay, thanks for having me, my name is Angela De Palma-Dow. I am the current new executive director at the Lake County Land Trust, and I'm really excited today to give a little presentation with my colleague, Mary Jo Valesquez. She'll do the second, well, the majority of the presentation about a wetland project, restoration project that's adjacent to the city of Lakeport. I also want to say that there's somebody on the Zoom, Vivian McLeod. She is calling in, and she is the secretary at Big Valley Council, and she, Big Valley is one of our partners on this project. That's fine, I have goodies. Put them everywhere, but not on your computers, because they're magnets, or in your wallet. All right, does that work? Oh, okay, thank you. So, we can, so our mission at the Lake County Land Trust works to conserve and restore land and water resources of important environmental, scenic, cultural, historic value on behalf of the present and future generations. And we do that through dedication to preserving Lake County's natural resources through education, cooperation, conservation, and restoration. Now, I say "we" throughout this presentation, I don't mean me, I've only been here a month. The Lake County Land Trust has been around for about 32 years, so when I say "we," I'm really talking about all the folks that have been here for that time, whether it's dedicated volunteers, the donors, the staff, we have a staff member here, Meg Harper, as well as all the volunteers and all the board members that have worked really hard to make the Land Trust what it is today and protecting so much space here in Lake County. So not me, at this point. So, we've been around since 1993, we are a nonprofit organization. Currently, there's about 500 acres that are owned and managed and stewed by the Land Trust here in Lake County. It'd be great if we can double that number, and that's my goal as the new executive director. And we would really like, or we provide a lot of guided walks, educational recreational events. And if you haven't been up to Upper Lake, short little drive from Lakeport, we have a nature center, so it's a preserve, a Rodman Preserve, and this is our nature center. So if you want to see some cool skulls, rocks, plants, birds, and pelts, that's, that's a great place to explore those things. And how do we do what we do? Well, we have funding through our donors to purchase land, as well as grants. We conduct stewardship, so managing that land, you know, managing it for fire protection, but also habitat restoration, invasive species, and wildlife habitats. And we also really value enhancing properties for public access and exploration. So when we're looking at properties, when we manage properties, we really want the public to be able to come out and enjoy them, particularly looking at the views of the lake, the mountains, learn about plants, learn about wildlife and management. And we have public events on, on these properties as well. And all of these properties have been able to get through community member support, donors, businesses, grants from charitable foundations, as well as state agencies like California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Wildlife Conservation Board has been a big partner for land acquisition projects, and then the California Council of Land Trust, so big shout out to them, they're paying my salary, I really appreciate it. If you haven't been to our website before, this is what it looks like, and we just added this events calendar here. If you go to the events tab on the top, it's the very first item on the dropdown. So if you're looking for something to do this weekend, maybe you have some relatives visiting from out of town, maybe they're staying at an Airbnb, you want to go out, see a trail, explore something, you can look at our calendar events and see what's going on in any of these beautiful properties. And if you wanted to look at the property in depth, get a little more information about it, we have under the lands tab, it talks about all the, all the properties that we manage and own or partner with that are open up for exploration. And so here's a little snapshot of where those properties are located around the county, and they are really around the county. So like in South County, we have Rabbit Hill, the Water Basket Water Towers that have just been painted, are beautiful, that's a great place to explore. There's a partnership with the Nature Conservancy for Boggs Lake. These things aren't in Lakeport, but when people come to stay in Lakeport and they're looking for activities they can do within a day or half a day, these are a lot of places they could explore. And as a CTA or Certified Tourism Ambassador, these are all places that, you know, I've told people about they could visit even if they're staying in Lakeport. And then we have places that we're still making management plans for, places like Monitor Island in the Lower Arm, and then there's a spot of land up on Mount Canokti. And the Rodman Preserve, which I talked about already, but then the two we're gonna focus on today are the Kuanapo Wetland Preserve, and this is made up from the Wright Property and the Keithley Property. And so now I'm gonna turn it over to Mary Jo Valesquez, who's gonna talk about the restoration plans for these properties. Okay.
Thanks, thanks for having us. This is a really exciting project, and since the northern border of the preserve is also the Lakeport city limits, it's very accessible. So this is the location of the preserve, you can see, I don't know, you see South Main Street and Soda Bay Road, so is just before you get to Napa Auto Parts, as you're heading south, if you look out on the left, that's the northern part of the preserve, and then the main access we use is actually on Soda Bay Road. And then the main access we use is actually on Soda Bay Road. So, in 2020, we purchased the bulk of the property. It was the Wright Family Ranch, and so we acquired that in the middle of COVID, which was an interesting experience, the longest table I've ever seen with Val sitting at one end signing and the power of attorney for the other people at the other end. Big long table out in her driveway. So, this property contains the historic Manning Creek, which, or Delta, which Manning Creek was channelized away through Aqua Modification?
Hydro Modification.
Hydro Modification. She's trying to teach me. So, this is an image taken from Clear Lake of that area. You can see in front the tulies, and then behind them are the riparian, so semi-water trees that we have, a lot of willows and other trees. So, then in the end of 2023, with exactly 30 hours left before we lost our option, we signed the papers to acquire the Keithley, the Glenn and Bertha Keithley Family Ranch. And this board wrote a very nice letter in support of that, and we appreciate that. Although, it was pulled from the consent agenda, and I was watching online, and I was really sorry I wasn't here. But it was just to say nice things about the Land Trust, so much appreciated. So, it contains the modified, as in being channelized, Manning Creek. And this is looking at, from Manning Creek across to, in the background, those trees on the left side, those are the riparian trees on the delta at the other side of the preserve. So, it's a 264-acre preserve. So, this is a very old map, 1919. And I pulled it up because I wanted to make a point. You can see the black and yellow line, that's Adobe Creek, and that formed the barrier between two tribes, the Habanapenapo on the east side, and then the Kulanapo on the west side. And the red square up there in the Kulanapo Territory is the preserve. And so, we were out there with their Big Valley's Tribal Historic Preservation Officer. And he allowed us to, he gave us permission to name the preserve the Kulanapo Preserve in honor. So, that is shown on the left. This is the Big Valley Protected Lands. You see Kulanapo, our mellow wetland preserve we purchased a while ago. The two orange are properties that are in easement with NRCS. And then, so basically between Lakeport and Clear Lake, this is what is in trust, in preserve. But right next to our wetland is a wetland that's owned by Big Valley. You can see here, that's in yellow. So, working with Big Valley, stewarding and co-managing this plan just makes sense. It's a continuous wetland. So, we're really excited to be working with them. So, right now, we're working on a memorandum of understanding and a co-management plan with Big Valley. And we've got funding to work on with them on that, which we're really excited about, and that's going very well. And then we're also partnering with them to work on a restoration plan with a company that they've been working with for a while, that's engineers and hydrologists. They've been working on fish ladders with them. So, now we're working with them on planning the restoration. And January this year, we got a grant from CDFW for 1.1, over 1.18 million to plan that restoration. So, we're working hard on it. We meet every other week. So, this is a 1938 topo map that begins to tell us what we might need to do. You can see there's two paths of Manning. One, I labeled the primary channel, and the other, the overflow channel. And why I gave them those names will become evident as there were two channels. And right now, there's one, which is the primary channel. One thing that's always puzzled me is that you can see the property line between the two parcels in what was the Keithley Ranch has this little hump in it. Well, Manning Creek goes straight, and I always wondered what that hump was. And what it was, was the original property line was actually Manning Creek. And then there was, we discovered, after we acquired the property, there was a waterfall on it, which sounds lovely, except this is a spawning creek, and that's what we call a fish barrier. So, we went to and found a 1952 aerial photo that helps us understand how that waterfall appeared. Basically, that's the original meandering Manning Creek path. And then they cut a deep channel up almost to the creek and put pumps in it so they could do flood irrigation. If you look at a close-up, here we have the channel they dug, the creek still flowing on its original path. But we think eventually over time, from 1952, that Manning Creek just decided to go straight. So, that's what creates the waterfall, because the channel is so much deeper than Manning Creek is. And this is an image taken by CDFW employee Nathan Cohen. He wrote a grant to get the California Conservation Corps crew in, and the first thing they did is clear, so we couldn't see the waterfall. There was so much debris there and blackberry bushes and everything. So, they worked really hard. Their first job was to clear up the creek. And the really interesting thing, as you stand in the creek, the waterfall goes off to the left, just like we would predict from the 1952 photo. So, it confirms what happened. So, that's about where the waterfall is. So, the plan is, right now, we're thinking we'll restore the original flow, and then we'll fill in that channel and plant it with wetland plants. Oops, why did I go? I must have hit the wrong one. So, now, oh no. Now we go out to, this is the historic Delta that the creek was channelized away from. And so, this is what we think is the water path. So, they tried to channelize away, but the water went where it wanted to. And this is a 1977 photo, and you can see that the water is still flowing from Manning Creek out to the delta. But it only does that in years when there's a lot of water, a lot of rain. But here's a picture from 2024 Sam Houston took. He was out there doing drone imaging for the movie he and Angela were working on. And you can see the original Manning Creek's over there, and there's a second flow that's going out to the historic delta. So, the creek goes where it wants to go. We just need to make that a more regular thing, because that vastly increases the health of that delta to have the water there more regularly. So, this is an image now. The blue jaggedy line is the level of the, the level of water on the property when the lake is full. So, there's water up to that mark on the property. But Angela, when she's working at the county and Tribal Eco-Restoration Alliance, worked on planting some tulies, and then Nathan brought over the triple Cs, and they planted some more tulies. So, we've restored tulies in the pink area. We're thinking in our plan that these would be new tulie areas that we plant. And then a combination of native grasses and native wildflowers of Forbes and would go in in the slightly upland area. And then the true upland area where we already have Valley Oak, we're going to be collecting acorns and to expand the oak woodlands. And then these would be the two flows that we're planning to restore the level. We also have to dredge out the creek because it's full of sediment. And this is, I wanted to invite everybody to our first public walk of the year. It's going to be Saturday, June 14, 9:00 a.m. There are announcement sheets back there. Grab some for a reminder. On your GPS, it's 446 Soda Bay Road. It's the beginning of the driveway up to the preserve. And hope to see you there. This is, I think this was our last walk of last year. It was the Thanksgiving, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. That's why everybody's so bundled up. So, thank you, and are there any questions? Do we have time for questions?
Just a quick question. So, you said you have 500 acres under Land Trust?
Yes.
And you got a $1.18 million grant? That's like, you know, thousands of dollars per acre for a grant. You need to tell us what your secret is.
Well, the vast, vast, vast bulk is to hire the hydrologist and the engineers, because we have to deal with the Army Corps and the Water Board, because we're going to be working in the lakebed. So, and the permitting, thousands and thousands of dollars of permitting that are going to go on.
I'm not asking about expenses. I was asking about the actual, like, it's like $2,200 per acre that they gave you. That's a lot.
Well, that, that 1.18 is just for that Kulanapo, for the 264 acre.
Oh, so it's double that. Kevin, what are you doing wrong? Wow. Good for you.
I'll just say, I appreciate what you do. I'm going to try to make it out to the Land Trust. I know I've been out to Rodman Slough. That's really neat. And just acknowledging the collaboration that it takes between the tribe and all of the moving parts with the city and the county, and like you said.
Well, honestly, the tribes have been great to work.
Absolutely.
It's, it's been a real pleasure and a learning experience. You know, there's, they do different things with tulies at different age, and each, each stage of the tulie has a different name.
Oh, wow. And probably a different use, right?
Yes, yes. Little, they eat them, and there's a game they play with them too.
Pretty neat.
For the kids, so it's fun, so. Well, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
And we really hope that this is an asset for Lakeport.
Absolutely.
Sure.
So, and I just want to comment that, you know, it's wonderful to see the stewardship of our lake. It's so important that we're taking care of it. It's sort of the gem of where we live, and we're fortunate to be here. And so, we owe it to the lake to take care of it.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much for that. Did anyone in the room have questions or comments on this topic? And anyone, oh, come on up.
Oh, I didn't. Sorry. That, that image of the people all standing, we have, we're in the middle of, Pitzer Foundation gave us a grant to construct two educational platforms. So, one's at the conjunction of the lake and a canal, and then another one's looking more out over where the wetlands are. So, we're in the middle of that. We're in the final stages of designing the educational signage that's going to go on there. We're working with Jerry Grody on that, and it's, it's fun. We're, the problem is, there's too many things we want to educate on. It's like, well, this about pollinations, but that about pollinator. What about co-evolution? So, we're negotiating.
Anyone online, Mel? The hand raised?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Jo.
Our next presentation supervisor Sabatier will present the annual update of PEG TV.
Bruno, Bruno.
So, you guys got a $2 million grant, right?
I feel like we need something when you came up. You know, like boxers.
You know how awkward it is to be on this side of the dais.
She's trying to fire you up.
So, my name is Bruno Sabatier. I'm the current chair for the local community station, PEG TV. We have an agreement between the county and both cities where you all pitch in for our operation of PEG TV. And I'm here to give you my annual report, so then I can submit an invoice to City Manager Ingram and request my funding for the year.
He already did.
So, this is a formal. I would have sent it earlier this morning, but I didn't want to be put at the end of the agenda. I needed it to be earlier in the agenda.
Now, now we see what's going on. Okay.
So, just real quick to go over who we are. Our board members, again, represent the city and the cities in the county. From Clear Lake, we have Councilmember Mary Wilson. From Lakeport, we have Christina Wilson. We also found that in Clear Lake, there is an alternate. So, if you ever want to have an alternate, please think of that. It's always nice to have an alternate in all of our committees. So, just helpful to make sure we have quorum no matter what happens. For the county of Lake, I'm the representative. And for education, because we work with LCOE, that's part of PEG, the E, Public Education Government. Education is Kevin Mack. If you are aware of who Kevin Mack is, he is the IT Director. I might have just given him that title. But he's one of the top IT folks over at LCOE, and he's been doing that for quite some time. And our public member has been vacant for quite some time. Elaine Brown submitted an application, and we took in her application. She is officially one of our members. Our station manager is the amazing Thomas DeWalt. Many of you have maybe seen him. He's moving around all over the place, working with the county a lot, works with the Farm Bureau, Lake County Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber. He'll do videography for anyone that requires videography for a fee. We'll talk about that later. We also have been struggling with our assistant station manager, and we just settled on Cheyenne Blue. She's fitting in just well and taking care of our social media and is working towards becoming a videographer for us as well. So, our budget for this past year, we're working on our current year. It hasn't been finalized. It doesn't really typically change all that much, so 25, 26 should be very similar. Our operating budget, again, is based on the revenue we receive from the cities in the county. But as of late, with all of the services that we've been providing for videography, we've been able to contract with the county. For example, this year, we have $17,000 with the county and other odd jobs that we get hired for. So, our revenues at this moment are $52,000, which is almost double what it was two years ago, and we're hoping to continue to increase. In fact, we just got hired to do the tattoo convention in Ukiah. We should probably tell PEG in Ukiah that we're being hired to do stuff in Mendocino. We'll be kind. They don't do that kind of service, though, so we're not stepping over. Again, the city of Clear Lake is providing $10,000. City of Lakeport, you guys will be giving me a check for $2,000. And the county of Lake, they provide $15,000. The $10,000 was for the original contract we had with them to do the municipal advisory councils. But that's increased since then to, it should be $32,000, because we added $7,000. Our operating budget expenses, we pay our station manager a stipend of $1,000 a month when you include all the services he's been doing for all of the videography work. He's bringing in about $28,000. Our editor, we provide a stipend of $400 a month. Our editor should change that to station manager assistant. That's $4,800. And we are paying in return, the city of Clear Lake is kind of an in-kind contribution. They give us $10,000. We give it right back. They provide us a facility. They provide us with insurance, and they provide us with an audit, and they take care of our financials as well. So, it's actually a pretty good deal for us. So, in return, we have a capital budget as well. That capital budget goes through MediaCom. They have 1% of every single bill goes directly to PEG. And so, it's called a pass-through. We receive approximately $48,000 in the pass-through. We are seeing a slow decrease in the number of people that have MediaCom. I think things like Starlink is really taking on. People are seeing that they have good access to the internet in hard-to-reach places that MediaCom has been able to reach, but hasn't really provided a great reliable service. And so, I think that people are changing over, and so we're seeing some of that decrease. Because we get the pass-through whether it's internet or if it's cable. As far as our expenses, utilizing the pass-through, we've been buying cameras, lights, computers, anything that we need in order to do the work that we're being hired to do. We've spent about $32,000 last year. We have quite a large reserve of approximately $300,000, and we are excited to start using that money. And even though we've been spending more money, it seems like there's always something coming in. We're in a good situation. Our current activities is to support local events. We do have a very amazing sound system. I know I always try to get Lakeport to utilize it for your summer events and your summer concerts. It does come with a fee, but it is probably the best sound system you will hear here in Lake County. We provide the sound system for the concerts in Clear Lake. It's very professional. In fact, a local Kelseyville gentleman is our main audio technician, and he's the audio technician at the Chase Center in San Francisco for basketball games and music and all kinds of stuff. So, we have somebody of very high skill level that's able to do those things for us. We also provide videography. That is currently $40 an hour. We'll bring whatever equipment is needed, and we'll go ahead and film and then edit and provide that you with a copy, put it on our website, put it on PEG TV and all that. We're supporting our local municipal advisory councils, at least for the county. There's seven of them. All seven are utilizing the mobile AV unit. And we just started this. We have an MOU right now that's going back and forth. We're going to finalize that soon. I was going to say your first name, Councilmember Price. It was there for when we made the final decision. We are going to buy all of the equipment for Kingdom Games here in Lakeport, in their new location. And we will put together a podcast for them. They'll take care of all the furniture, all of the building stuff. We'll provide all the equipment. We'll provide some training. In the MOU, we'll see if it stays that way. We're hoping to get some free access to the podcast so that PEG themselves can create content. And the idea that- And the idea that we provide the equipment, eventually we get content back in return. So we could put that on our website and also on PEG TV, depending on the type of content that we receive as well. We are limited to only three things that we restrict. Maybe three is not the right number. Two obscenities, pornography, and the call to arms. So it is three. We we can't tell people what to do. Can't tell them vote for this. We can't provide obscenities or pornography. That's just that's not appropriate for us to do. But we are are also a free speech channel, and we do want to get all perspectives and all ideas to be shared. Future activities, this is one we've been trying to work on for a long time. I hear somebody's interested in AV somewhere. But we want to work with the schools. It'd be great to get more of our youth involved. And to me, the the audio visual classes are kind of like gardening classes. If you have a teacher that has a great passion and interest, you'll have a beautiful garden in your school. If that teacher leaves, that garden eventually dies until somebody new comes in. Like, it's hard to have certain niche skill sets that certain teachers want to do all the that schools want to do all the time. It requires the right teacher in the right place. And so it's been difficult for us to find the right people. But we want to continue to try and connect there. We want to increase our operational budget, continue to do work around the community, continue to highlight the events, the people, the history. In fact, we're meeting with a group to try and do some videos to record our history, the stories of our history here in Lake County. We want to increase our viewers. This has been a sore subject. Lakeport PEG connection has never yet existed. We have tried so hard, and I I do want to pause for a minute and thank Sean Swatash and Mike Ruthers. They've been working at MediaCom for quite a long time. Both of them have retired. We have new folks that are heading MediaCom and believe his name is Kevin, if I'm correct. I think that's his name. I'm not just saying that because you're here. And we hope that he'll bring fresh eyes, fresh ideas, and fresh perspectives on why were we not able to connect PEG here? We want you guys to be live on Tuesdays at six PM when you have your meetings. We want to catch you in the act. We don't want to wait till it's recorded at a later time. It's just it makes it more transparent, better for the public to be able to see it in live action as it goes. So we'll we'll keep working on that. We want to continue to pursue partnerships. We will work with anyone here in the county. This is two ideas that we're kind of floating around. We did have a conversation with KPFZ. We want to do the same thing as we did with Kingdom Games. We want to set up a podcast system so that any programmer at KPFZ who wants to just push the button and start recording the video rather than just what's going and being broadcast through the radio. We want to give them the opportunity to create podcasts with what programs they're already doing. Don't change anything. Just get a video camera in there. Plus, we know KPFZ does do some emergency broadcasting during our emergencies. It would be nice if we can connect them to our PEG TV and be live on Channel Eight at the same time. So there's opportunities there. We're going to continue those conversations and see where we go. The last idea is a really big idea. It will require funding. It will require support from many of our community businesses. But we want to create a live news show. We have media who creates print media, both online and on paper. But today's the day of video. Even thirty second videos might be too long. But we want to create live news broadcasting to try and get people more interested in what's happening here in Lake County. And so we're going to do what we can, maybe a once a month show, trying to highlight what happens here at the city council, at the Clear Lake City Council, at the county, school boards, whoever wants to let us know what's happening so we can inform the public and try to get them more engaged with what's happening in their communities. And that's our our big idea of the year. We'll see where we get. And we have the money for it. And that is all I have for you unless you have any questions.
I have a question. So we have talked about doing a city council meeting at the school to create some civic engagement with the kids. Could you guys help us with that?
We would be happy to do that.
Come up with a plan. Thank you.
That's neat. I I just enjoy how passionate you are about PEG and, you know, the opportunity and the potential. So I'm happy to be on board. And if you guys have any questions or need to connect with Bruno, I'm happy to be that link if you need anything. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Great job. I feels very upbeat when you talk about PEG and when you talk about the getting this information out to the public. It's it is really needed. And I I love the emphasis. That was the one thing I had written down before the meeting was that Lakeport PEG connection. It feels I've probably been working on it since I was on the council, but it's been three years that your annual report, we talk about, let's get that connection going. So I'm glad it's still on the radar. It hasn't fallen off because I I do think that that engagement is good. And the transition and looking into podcasts and the growing that PEG TV is doing, I I like it.
I think we have opportunities. One of them is not a missed opportunity. It's just we need to keep working to get. I feel like I'm blushing that we're still talking about the Lakeport connection, but we'll we'll get there. We'll get there.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job, Bruno.
Never give up. And Kenny, do you have a comment or question? Anybody from the public have anything you want to share on this topic? No one in the room?
Madam Mayor, just really quickly, a big shout out Elaine. Thank you for filling that public seat. I know that one's been open for a while, so that's great.
Yeah, she's great. Awesome.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Bruno. No hands raised. No hands raised.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next item is the Cross Connection Ordinance. Going to introduce the proposed ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero eight of the Lakeport Municipal Code and set a second reading for May twenty, two thousand twenty five.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to present the updates required for the Cross Connection Control Plan moving forward. In the nineteen eighty seven, the enhanced surface water treatment rule, as part of that rule, they created the Cross Connection Control Program, which consisted of Title Seventeen in the in the state code. Then they decided a couple of years back that they wanted needed an update to this Cross Connection Control Program. And so they decided to create the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook, and which is now the the program to follow. So what that does is that replaces Title Seventeen and makes Title Seventeen go away, and we have to change over to the policy handbook. So in doing so, the first step of this will be to, of course, change the ordinance. So we have the the authority to develop and administer the plan. And then the next step will be the Cross Connection Control Program that we have to have approved and then submitted to the state. And then finally, the plan that goes with the with the program. So a little more in the in-depth background, on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty three, the State Water Board adopted their Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook, which took effect on July first, two thousand twenty four, and replaces the Cross Connection Control Regulations found in the California Code of Regulations Title Seventeen. All public water systems are required to comply with the requirements in the CCCPH. The primary objective of the CCCPH is the protection of public health through the establishment of standards intended to ensure drinking water supplies are protected from hazards associated with the backflow of unknown substances into the distribution system. The recently adopted CCCPH effectively repealed and replaced previous cross connection regulations codified in the Title Seventeen of the California Code of Regulations. Certain sections of chapter thirteen point oh eight of the Lakeport Municipal Code contain references to these outdated and repealed Title Seventeen regulations and therefore must be amended to reflect the current law. The CCCPH, among other things, requires that all public water systems, community non-transient, non-community, and transient, non-commUNITY water systems adopt a cross connection control program and submit a cross connection control plan to their local district LPA office by July first, two thousand twenty five. This draft Cross Connection Control Program is attached and contains the ten required elements and implementation. We are in the process of drafting the plan, which will be submitted later. So again, tonight is just the the first reading of the ordinance, the change to the ordinance. And then in June, I'll come back to see about getting the control plan approved. So any questions?
Yeah. I was just looking. It says in here, it says, the ordinance implements requirements of state law which already previously required cross connection and backflow prevention. It can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that the adoption of this ordinance will have a significant effect on environment pursuant. Sounds like, was this a real serious problem before this came up?
I don't think it was a serious problem, but they looked at it. And originally, there were basically the the new in this book, there's ten elements. And there that adds four elements to the original six that was in Title Seventeen. And some of those elements were if you have a cross connection event, that there's a a whole process that you need to follow and report it to the state, and they give you all the details of how to report it. There's also the incident reporting, hazard assessments. As I mentioned before in a previous meeting, they're requiring a certain number of assessments to require backflow devices in the system so that we know that there's adequate protection across the board.
But that's my question is, how serious a problem is this, Paul, over there?
It it hasn't been luckily a problem for us, but there are back.
Aren't there regulations already in effect that are similar to these?
Yeah.
Except for all of the reporting and the reporting and the reassessment and all of the logging and what you do if there is a problem. I just what I'm getting at is it just seems like a bunch of minutia to do what you've already been doing and adding different regulations and different layers that you haven't had really a problem with yet. And you already have safeguards against this. And they already, as they said, they're already with certainty, there's no possibility of that anything changes or having any significant effect. It just seems like, is this something the state dumped on you without your permission?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
I totally agree. Like, have let's have a meeting about the meeting and make a plan with another plan. I just feel bad.
Had to do all of that. Total minutia, which you are already a professional. And all this stuff is covered in contracting law and construction and all kinds of different, you know, health code laws and all this stuff. I just I just shocks me that we have to be dealing with this stuff at a council meeting over and over about something that's already, Paul, I'm sure has this in hand.
Yes.
Now you have four more steps.
Yeah, I would agree. It's just it's a lot more work. I mean, that's the bottom line.
And we have the money for it, sure.
More. Any other questions?
I I had one question about just a specific part of section three. The it says that we can only only backflow prevention devices approved by the Foundation for Cross Connection Control and Hydraulic Research at the University of Southern California can be approved for installation. Is that something?
There's a monopoly.
Yeah, is that how hard is it to find these devices for people developing property?
It's not. It's not hard to find at all. They'll they'll provide a list that have been approved. And and basically, the the program that you just mentioned, it's a it's a, you know, someone manufactures a device. They have to has to be bench tested for one year to try to break it. Then it's field tested for another year. And then when it passes all those requirements, then it can be accepted and go out to the system.
Okay.
For distribution.
So not something you can just get off of Timu and install. It has to be like a real backflow.
Okay, that's what this program actually does is provides an updated list.
Okay.
So that's actually a help to the water purveyor because you can always just reference that list. Whereas if you have a solid program that's becoming outdated, there may be new devices, and then everything that comes, you have to research. So this this does make it easier for that.
Okay, good. Because I liked the next number four. It says that the city will establish and maintain a list so that I would think would be helpful rather than somebody searching everywhere for a device that's accredited or whatever. So good. I'm glad to to hear that we'll have a list to provide.
Yeah, the list will be in our plan.
Okay.
Submitted, yeah.
Accredited.
Yeah, it's got to be approved. Thank you, Paul.
Any other questions, comments, or points of frustration about the state?
Well, we have a new booklet now. That's the good news.
Any comments from members of the public on this item? Any hands raised online?
No hands raised online.
Thank you, Mel.
They were waiting.
All right, so bringing it back to council.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further, I'll move to introduce and waive first reading of the proposed ordinance amending sections thirteen dot oh eight dot zero three zero, thirteen dot oh eight dot zero five zero, and thirteen dot oh eight dot zero six zero of chapter thirteen point oh eight of the Lakeport Municipal Code and set a second reading for May twentieth, two thousand twenty five.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And motion carries. I guess I should have said aye as well. I'm all in. All right.
Thanks, Paul.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's my job.
Job security.
It gets better.
And next, we have Council Business Utilities Director. Water shut off policy authorize the amendment to the administrative policy utilities billing.
Yeah, so we're here to talk about Senate Bill Three, which is requiring an update to any administrative policy to include some certain elements in which I'll cover in the staff report here. In twenty nineteen, the legislature adopted Senate Bill nine nine eight, the Water Shut Off Protection Act. It increased protections for residents facing termination of water service due to non-payment. In enacting these protections, the legislature recognized that water debt and residential water shut offs threaten human health and well-being and have disproportionate impact on infants, children, the elderly, low-income families, communities of color, people of whom English is a second language, physically disabled persons, and persons with life-threatening medical conditions. In two thousand twenty three, the legislature adopted Senate Bill Three, which expanded the protection of the act to more people by applying the act to smaller water systems. While the act previously applied to systems with more than two hundred service connections, the act now applies to all community water systems. Application of the act to these newly covered smaller systems took effect August first, two thousand twenty four. Senate Bill Three also clarified that covered water systems must provide alternative payment plan options to all customers who are unable to pay their water bill, not only customers who meet certain medical and financial criteria. The requirement took effect in January first, two thousand twenty four, which, mind you, we've been in compliance since it took effect. The act continues to apply only to the discontinuation of residential water service for non-payment. The act does not apply to terminations due to unauthorized action by a customer. The act has several requirements for termination of water service due to non-payment. Some of these are no water shut offs unless at least sixty days delinquent. So again, we can't take any action on any turn offs until sixty days delinquent or beyond. Under the act, a covered water system can't discontinue service for sixty days. If it's discontinued for non-payment, the water system is required to provide information on how to restore the service. And and we can also offer a payment plan if necessary over twelve months, not to exceed twelve months to restore service. Written policy required. The act requires every covered water system to have a written policy on discontinuation of residential water service for non-payment. The policies shall include all of the following: a plan for deferred and reduced payments, alternative payment schedules, a formal mechanism for customer to contest or appeal a bill, and a telephone number for customers to discuss to avoid discontinuation of service. The other one is telephone or written notification requirements. The act also addresses the notice which must be provided to the person listed on the water bill and provides notifications notification protections for tenants. And then so it gives the requirements of the water bill, at least seven business days before termination. If the customer's address is not the address of the property, that they have to be mailed to the occupant. If the water system is unable to make contact with the customer, they have to make sure they reach out by telephone, written notice, and and required to make good faith effort to visit the residence and leave or make arrangements for payment. And then the other element is annual reporting. A covered water system must report annually to the State Water Resources Control Board on water shut offs due to inability to pay and post the information on its website. on water shut-offs due to inability to pay and post the information on its website if it has one. So this basically covers the new SB three requirements, and so before you is, we're just asking to get the approval, we'll post that on the website and have it as official documentation that we're covering the space.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
What are the substantive differences between the prior policy before SB three?
There really isn't a whole bunch of them.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Yeah, no, there's-
No further questions.
Okay.
In other words, we were doing it pretty much right all-
We were, yeah, yeah. They only added a couple more.
So this is just another layer?
It's a formality.
Okay, yeah. Ministerial BS. Okay, we got it. Thank you, Paul.
Any comments or questions from members of the public? No one in the room? Anyone online, Mel?
No, no hands raised online.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for comments or a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to move to authorize the amendment to the administrative policy utilities billing.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Paul. All right, so we just zipped through this meeting. We're now at the City Council Communications, and we can start with Utilities Director Paul Harris.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that we're having our open house at the water treatment plant tomorrow afternoon from three PM till seven, so if you can make it, come on down, and we'll give you a tour.
Do you have snacks?
Yeah, we have snacks.
Okay. Awesome. All right, Police Chief Dale Stoben.
Yeah, I will share that on Friday, I had the opportunity to participate and visit the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Peoples' Day event at Hobarton Park and helping our staff with our booth and joining seventy-seven other booths, which was like about fourteen more booths than the year before.
Huge.
That event was a great event to attend, as it always is, it was a beautiful day. And of course, beautiful having it at Hobarton Park. There were about over sixteen hundred and fifty people in attendance that day, and I just wanted to, to share with the council some conversation I had with Darnell Aparicio. He's the outreach manager with Tribal Health, and extend his thanks to the city council for allowing them to have that event at Hobarton Park, and they were very pleased. It turned out to be a beautiful day and a beautiful place for it.
It was a beautiful day and a beautiful place. I was walking through there with the city manager Ingram, and it just was so right to have that event there. It was such a well-attended event and well-put-on event. There was just so much going on, and it just felt so right to have that whole, that whole event happening in that space. So it was pretty amazing.
Yeah, it's a classy organization, and they definitely have it dialed in and put together a very good event.
Nice, thank you. All right, Community Development Director Joey Henowitz.
No report this evening.
Okay, after all that, you're just a no request. After I got it right. Administrative Services Director Kelly Buendia.
I also have no report.
Okay, Public Works Director Ron Ladd.
Thank you, Mayor Costa. I want to let council know that tomorrow, Public Works staff as well as utility staff will be attending Ag Day at the Lake County Federate Grounds. The event's geared toward K through sixth grade students, highlights local careers, and practices in agriculture and natural resources. So we've been a partner with that or set up in that for several years now, and it's a good event, and we're happy to-
That's cool.
Represent Lakeport there.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Mel, the GIS guy.
The GIS dude. Nothing to report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mackenzie, is your last name still Anderson?
Yeah, we could stick with Anderson.
Okay, Mackenzie Anderson, Assistant City Attorney.
Newlywed. Yeah, I will be attending the Cal City's City Attorneys Conference on Thursday and Friday of this week, and I will report back if I learn anything worth reporting back.
Awesome, thank you. Kevin Ingram, City Manager.
Yeah, two things. We do have quite a bit on our upcoming agenda for May twentieth, so you guys are warned. So there's going to be a few pieces there. And then the probably more happier news is staff is working really hard, and we're very excited that we'll be bringing in all of our city council brethren on May sixteenth, was the city of Lakeport will be hosting the Cal City's Redwood Division Meeting. We've been putting it off for a while till we had the park ready to showcase, and it's ready to showcase. We'll be going out onto the water, thanks to Councilmember Disney letting us use some boats there, and then ending at a dinner there at the waterfront. So we're very excited to be hosting that. Looking out at the future, it looks like the weather's going to be cooperative, so hopefully it stays that way.
Wonderful, yeah, I just, it seems like it's just happening. You know, I keep thinking, well, gosh, do you need any help? What's going on? What do we have to do? And it's like, people are just making it happen, right?
That'd be Kelly.
Oh, Kelly, people, people, Kelly making it happen. Awesome, Kelly. All right, thank you. Councilmember Matina.
No report.
For Tim Disney?
I have a couple things. First is this Thursday's, our LCRA meeting, the Lake County Recreation Agency meeting. We'll let you know if anything substantial comes out of that. Also, on Saturday, the Saturday, the tenth, is our Lakeport Beautification Day. I just got a text from the Environmental Impact Club President from the Clear Lake High School. He said that they'll have about ten members show up. We're meeting at Museum Park at nine AM. Bring brooms and gloves and anything you can. We're going to try to spruce up the downtown in the anticipation of the visitor season. And then also, the last week, I guess two weeks ago now, attended the seaplane dock discussion with the pilots, as well as our Public Works Director. And it was, it was a good discussion. I mean, there is definite interest from the pilots to have a dock. The one that's proposed is, is very, very top-of-the-line, way out of any sort of budget, at least for now. There was no discussion of who's paying for the dock. I think they, the pilots kind of just assumed that we will.
We told them a long time ago they would.
Yeah, and with this small little dock at five hundred thousand dollars, it seemed a little out of reach, but I really liked the interest of the pilots to continue to come to Lakeport and to have infrastructure that they can make in a regular, not just a regular event, but come up for the weekend and stay. So it was a good discussion, and I was just happy to see the amount of interest, although nobody wrote a check, but the amount of interest was definitely there. And that's all I have.
All right, Councilmember Perlett.
So I got called recently about a, it was a survey on the phone, and then they said that Sacramento State College was doing a survey on tobacco sales to kids, and since the county never bothered to talk to most of the retailers, even though they said, oh, we did outreach, which I do not believe they did much, they said, would you be interested in chiming in on a Zoom meeting? We're holding sessions on the second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh, so tomorrow at six, six to seven thirty, I'm going to be on a Zoom meeting, and boy, they better be prepared. This is retailers that are actually going to chime in on the statewide concern about, you know, kids getting cigarettes, and I guess cigars and things like that. So we'll hear a little bit different side, but I don't know who's funding it. I don't know if it's big tobacco or, you know, the Health Department, California Department of Health, or, you know, Bill Gates. I have no idea. So I'll be reporting back on that. The one thing I am a little disappointed, Northern Ren, I was probably the first, second, or third person to file the paperwork to get my free energy kit, which all of us had paid for, and I had paid for in spades, like fifteen thousand dollars for customer assistance programs through my bill, and I have not gotten it yet, even though I was the first one on April twelfth in the AM, and now it's been over three weeks, nothing, crickets. So I don't get in a big hurry to send in your free energy kit, because it may never happen. I will let you know.
Yeah, they may be sorry they're taking so long for you.
Yeah. I was trying to go in anonymous, so they went- I was going to put Stacy. And put my address.
That's not anonymous, that's fraud.
It was just a thought.
They should be used to it.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Price?
All right, on that note, I do plan on going to the Downtown Beautification Day with Discover Lakeport and all the other parties involved. That should be fun. LMSA, your Lakeport Main Street Association, is, wanted me to remind you that they are having their Memorial Day Parade on the twenty-fourth. Sign-up forms are still available if you are interested in doing that. Peg TV, I'm not sure if you guys caught what Bruno said, but they are working on a podcast studio. Okay, at Kingdom Games, which should be pretty neat. Yeah, so, right? He, I don't know if it cut out when he was talking, but it'll be a podcast studio, like if you want to come and talk about the lake or the market or something like that, you'll have the opportunity to go in there and sit and then also be recorded. So that is kind of neat. I'd like to see that come to fruition. Friday, I have the opportunity of having the community center open for the public to just do kind of a self-guided walkthrough to get a visual on it. I actually got to go with Kevin and Ron Ladd, and I hadn't seen it in a while, but you guys have come a long way. So I think just providing the opportunity to walk through, get some excitement behind it, will help me gather some momentum, I guess, for the finishing of the grant application for the sign. So that's kind of neat. Also, Farmer's Market started today at Library Park. Try to make your way down there if you can. And then also, two new businesses opened up on Main Street. Remax is having their ribbon cutting on Thursday, and they're on Main Street. And then also, the new Indian restaurant should be open on Thursday as well. So just a little bit of information in case you guys didn't know, but a little bit of information goes a long way, so feel free to share. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I was also participated in the splash-in a little bit. I didn't go to that, you know, conversation that you had, but I was able to go to the conversation of the future of Lakeport and just hear what some of the people that are, well, Amanda from the Chamber of Commerce was there, I was there, two people from Skylark were there, and then this guy whose name I really have to go find, because he seems important. He's from a, more of a national group that interacts with the seaplane folks, guy named Steve, and you might have talked with him. At any rate, there does seem to be a lot of interest in our lake, and from what I got out of some of the conversation was that people are open to, so you got the high-end dock conversation, and then I got the, well, if we just had a welcoming shoreline, you know, we used to be able to just come right up right here. So I think there might be room to have, you know, conversation about how we can get them here in more numbers, even without a dock, but maybe for the longer-term goal, something that's a little more, you know, fixed, like you're describing. And they have, they set some kind of goals for next year, they'd like to double the number of the participants in terms of planes, but they also want to expand it to have more community-focused kinds of events, something fun for a lot of different community members to do. And the Chamber in particular is interested in looking at how to make sort of a menu of activities for partners and spouses and family members who might come with the pilots, so they have things to do in Lakeport and around the lake. So it's, there's a lot of really good energy that went into that, and so I'm excited to keep working with that group to see if, you know, what might come from that. So that was kind of encouraging. Had the opportunity to speak with the Rotary. I always call this my Debbie Downer one. The topic was child abuse in Lakeport. You had, we had the presentation here, that Rotary is a very action-oriented group, so I gave them the same information that we received, actually played the clip from our meeting here, and then talked about prevention that individuals can participate in, that has a meaningful impact, and that a group such as theirs can participate in. So that was pretty great, and I'm hoping to be able to take that a little further and give them some things to work with to benefit Lakeport in that way. Attended the Soper Reese groundbreaking. That was just fun to hear that history and to hear the exciting plans for the renovation there. And then, we won't meet again until after the, it's for the dogs event that's happening on the seventeenth. It is only in the morning, and so if you want to come on out and just have a fun time out there, maybe do the walk-run, spend some money to help support the efforts to raise money to support rescue efforts and helping those that are helping in that, resolve that problem in our community. There's going to be a lot of really cool things out there, but I have been just working away, making a whole selection of earrings and other fun things made by the mayor. So come on out and do your Christmas shopping early. Just buy a bunch of stuff for your people, put it in a drawer. It'll be, it'll be, you know, a weird little souvenir, right, to have, made by the mayor. It's only fun stuff. Yeah, and there's other really great stuff, other businesses bringing food and activities out there. What else are we going to do? Oh, I think at that event, at that event, I'm going to give information about our city's dog licensing program, have a QR code, I hope, I'm going to have hooked up available. And then I'm going to start doing some semi-regular coffee with a council member things. I think Councilmember Price said she's game to do it with me one time, maybe, so we might pick a date for that and have that information available out there. And if anybody else is interested, I know y'all have probably done that in your time, but if you're interested in, you know, a rotating thing, you know, let me know. And I think, I think that's it, so. All right, there we go. Nothing else. I guess this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we cancel the closed session?
There was no closed session. It was just, it was just-
I must have looked at the minutes when I was, oh, I am so-